Meeting call to order. Today is Tuesday, March 19th. It is now 7:10 PM. Town Council meeting, the Town Council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island.
Councilman Lichardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yeah.
Council Vice President Janico?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum.
Before you move on.
Under section forty-two dash forty-six dash four and forty-two dash forty-six dash five, A two of Rhode Island general laws, the Town Council will close the executive session that was held on March 12th to discuss collective bargaining agreements with Rhode Island Council Ninety-four, AFME, AFL-CIO, West Warwick Town Employees Local Two Zero Four Five, the International Brotherhood of Police Officers Local Three One Two, and Local One One Zero Four, International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Eyes have it.
Under section forty-two dash forty-six dash four and forty-two dash forty-six dash five, A two of Rhode Island general laws, Town Council will close the executive session that was discussed, that discussed the collective bargaining agreements with Rhode Island Council Ninety-four, AFME, AFL-CIO, West Warwick Town Employees Local Two Zero Four Five, the International Brotherhood of Police Officers Local Three One Two, and Local One One Zero Four, International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO, that was held on till tonight, March 19th.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Eyes have it.
Presentation, Prepare RI Internship Program, Shannon Larson, sponsored by Councilman Messier.
So, Prepare RI Internship Program, it was a program my daughter took place in last year. Last year, I believe, was the first year you guys did it.
Correct.
It was a six-week program that takes place over the summer. It's all for juniors, headed into their senior year. It's a real-life, real-job experience for kids, including a handful of West Warwick students are going to be involved this year, I know that. And I invited these ladies here tonight because I think it could benefit West Warwick, not only potentially involving either criminal justice with the police department or government, but also our local businesses in town. It teaches, I mean, my daughter loved it. Last year, she was interning at Gary Hee Courthouse with Rhode Island Child Support Enforcement, and she loved it. And it teaches kids, you know, real-life experience for jobs. And also, you know, for some of them, I'm sure it gives them experience after six weeks realizing, this is something that I don't want to do. And I think it would be great to involve the children of our community, introduce them to local government. I know too many times when they hear about stuff, especially here, it's negative stuff. So, I'll turn it over to you ladies and let you explain a little more in detail.
Just state your name.
Great, thank you. My name is Nina Pante. I'm the Executive Director at Skills for Rhode Island's Future.
And I'm Shannon Larson. I'm the Director of Employer Engagement at Skills for Rhode Island's Future.
One second. Ernie, can you turn the mics up because anybody in the back cannot hear.
That is on. Is that better?
That's it.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Messier, for the introduction. And members of the council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. As I mentioned, my name is Nina Pante. I'm the Executive Director of Skills for Rhode Island's Future. We're a statewide nonprofit organization that is coming up, we're coming up on our third-year anniversary. And we were started as a solution to make sure that Rhode Islanders have access to jobs that lead to a middle-class life. So, when we started our journey about three years ago, it was right when we were getting kind of the turnaround from the recession. Unemployment numbers in New England were, in Rhode Island, were still relatively high compared to our New England counterparts. And so, we got to work, working with employers around the state to figure out how to build talent pipelines and making sure unemployed and underemployed individuals had access to top companies with good-paying jobs. We learned very quickly in our journey that companies around the state were very interested in figuring out what the next generation of talent looked like, and particularly the current students in high school who are Generation Z, and what that talent pipeline is going to look like in the workforce. And so, we actually applied for funding through the state to design a high-school internship program. As Councilman Messier mentioned, last year was our pilot year, and his daughter Autumn was in our program. We were funded to place one hundred and fifty students. This year, we're looking to place over three hundred students into paid internships. Students earn eleven twenty-five an hour. We also align our work with college standards, so they earn four college credits at Rhode Island College. In this year, Rhode Island College is also giving a provisional acceptance to any student who completes our program plus meets their graduation requirements to get, gain admission to Rhode Island College. West Warwick was one of our priority schools last year, but unfortunately, not too many students took advantage of the opportunity. So, with the councilman's help, we kind of figured some strategies to go out there and really work with the school. The principal at the high school was great this year, really opened up the school for us to go in. So, we've had more students interested in the program. We've had over twenty children apply to the program, and we've already done our interviews, and they did fairly well at the school. One thing that keeps bubbling up is a lot of students, students at West Warwick, as well as other districts, are interested in government. They're interested in law enforcement. They're interested in education. And for us, there are potential opportunities, working with our local government agencies, to figure out how to make those internship opportunities available. So, we're here tonight to kind of introduce you to the program and hope that we can make some connections here in West Warwick for some of your high-school students who are looking to go into law enforcement or who are looking to go into government where there could be those opportunities. The nice thing about our program is we serve as the employer of record, and we take on all of the liability. So, we pay the wages, we pay the workman's comp. There's zero financial commitment that we're asking our employers to put into this. The one thing that we do ask is that the employer partners that we work with provide a really robust opportunity for students to learn. When students go through our program, they also get a lot of work readiness training. They're with us for an entire week where we talk to them about what are the expectations of the workplace and how they differ from what you're learning in school. What we've learned and what we've heard from most of our students from last year is not only did they gain valuable experience, but they're actually performing better this year in their senior year in high school. And we've actually seen a market difference in grades. Students are investing in their education differently because they know what life is like after high school. And we want to be able to create that here in West Warwick.
And quickly, I just want to point out, so the enrollment for the students this year is over, but they haven't been placed.
That is correct.
So, if West Warwick or any local business is interested in doing it, now is the time where you're trying to have the jobs ready to place the children.
That's exactly right, Councilman, is we're onboarding employers as we speak. We work with about seventy-two employer partners, large to small. We do work with the state government agencies, as you mentioned. Autumn was in, in one of our state government positions. But we've not had a lot of municipalities step up to the plate and say, how can we also take advantage of this?
It's a hu, it's a huge opportunity.
It's amazing.
And it's, and it's not, I know there's been some concern in the town that it's taking jobs away. It's not taking anybody's jobs. It's a six-week program, and it gives these children real-life experience. So, then when they, you know, they could decide, well, I love what's going on in the police department. They only know what they see on Live PD rather than what's really going on. Not to say it's not real.
And you know, what's interesting is, is, you know, I've been doing this for quite a while, and I also live in the educational space. I'm on the school board for the City of Providence. I've been doing that for eleven years. And I keep hearing from my partners in government, we are worried about retirement. We're worried about how we're going to backfill positions, right? The people aren't running to apply to be a police officer anymore. People are not running to apply to work in government anymore because the private sector has been growing in our local community. I know in Providence, they've had a difficult time filling the police academies. Well, I'm, you know, we're cultivating students and trying to get them interested in those fields. Teaching, there's a massive teacher shortage. We're trying to cultivate that at a young age so we can begin developing those pipelines. And I think that's right. It's not replacing today. It's thinking proactively about what your future workforce is going to look like.
And it's a very selective process because a lot of kids enter, and what's the percent?
We had, yeah, we had over twelve-hundred students apply for three-hundred positions.
And, I mean, the kids should pay attention. The sophomores becoming juniors, next year should pay attention because they're the ones that are going to be applying next year.
That's right.
So, it's only for juniors that are becoming seniors.
And it's, it's designed that way so students can take their year before their senior year in high school to think about how they're going to maximize their learning in their senior year and think about their college and career track after high, after high school.
Do you cap it per community?
We don't do a cap per community because this is really student-driven in who the students are. What I can tell you is we do have some priority districts, and we look at school data, we look at income levels, we look at percentage of free and reduced lunch. And I know West Warwick was one of those sites that was designated as a priority area by the Rhode Island Department of Education. So, we had, I believe it was twenty-two students this year apply from West Warwick. Our goal is if they all continue with our process and they meet our goals every step of the way, we'd like to onboard all twenty-two of the students in West Warwick because it has been deemed one of the priority areas for us.
So, the enrollment period's over?
The application process is over. The application process opened up December 3rd. It closed on February 1st. We are now in the interviewing phase of those students, so we had twelve-hundred students apply. We have interviews that'll happen with our team members first to prepare students on how to interview for a job. And then, we actually have student matching with employers, and employers will be part of the process of who gets selected to work with them for the summertime. So, that employer matching, that interview process is underway right now.
And I know last year was, I'm up until the last minute, that you were still, you know, because it was the first year.
It was the first year.
I remember my daughter was in the, you had the one-week program in between, and in between there was when you signed on with the State of Rhode Island.
That's correct. Yes. So, last year, when we, when we launched the program, we were literally given three months to design, recruit, and implement. And so, we worked until the very last moment. But this year, because we had enough time, we've actually started much earlier so that we can be more thoughtful about that onboarding process with employers and to give employers more time to think through what it is that they would like to offer for that student.
And it was, I mean, I was there for the graduation, if you want to call it.
Certainly.
It was awesome to see all those students come up there. A couple of them gave speeches about how, how much they loved the job and how much it taught them. It's different than regular school.
And I, and I think parents love to talk to the supervisors of the students, too, to learn firsthand, what did your child do over the summer? And, and you get to hear all the good things that you may not see, you know, when you're arguing with your teenage child at home, right?
And it's not, and I know we've mentioned municipal government and police, but it's not, it goes beyond that. I mean, the jobs span the gamut.
Amgen, lifespan, Bank of America, all the big, FM Global, CVS, yeah, all the big restaurant groups. We literally have seventy-two employer partners. Hasbro Toy Company, they're all at the table. Again, where we've seen a lag has been on the government side. The only government that just immediately sent up was the state. They also fund it. But we would love to get the municipalities involved as well.
I think, I think this is a great program from the sounds of things. I think you saw me chuckle when you said Generation Z because
Yes.
a lot of companies are having issues with that generation.
They are.
You know, after millennials, the Z's coming along, and they have a kind of a mentality, I'm going to work from home, or I don't, everything's done via computer, not face-to-face. So, a lot of businesses and corporations are actually looking at that generation, saying how we can get them out there and apply for these positions and jobs. Even my company has looked at that, and that's why I chuckled about the Generation Z because we kind of say, are they ever going to come to work?
And, and we hear that, we hear that all the time. And I will say, for me, in doing this work, I also feel that there's, a lot of times, there's a big disconnect between our educational system and work expectations, right? Our systems of education, our teachers, all well-intended, great work happening in our schools, but many of them have not experienced life outside their walls of, you know, their educational institution. And so, they, they don't know how to translate that work into real-world. I was at a meeting this morning, and I gave the hours if somebody wants to work at EB. And I said they work for shift, they have to start at 6:24 AM. There's like this collective gasp, and like, what do you mean, 6:24 AM? Kids can't get up at 6:24. I was like, you're training them to go in the trades. Well, then they need to understand if they're going to go into construction, if they're going to go into welding or pipe-lining or plumbing. I don't know a construction company that doesn't start at six o'clock in the morning, right? So, we're really aligning what those workplace expectations are. And the kids want it. They're hungry for this. They want to learn.
How many last year, did they all complete it? Any of them?
A hundred percent of the students graduated.
Which is awesome.
We had a hundred and sixty-two children go through the program. A hundred and sixty-two graduated. Literally, in the entire summer, we had three write-ups that were minor infractions. One kid who was on his cellphone a little too much. One kid who was bored because he finished his assignment, didn't say anything. We work with these kids all throughout the summer. So, employers, we don't just drop them at your front door and say, okay, good luck, goodbye. We're here to support you through that process and actually work with employers on developing project plans so that you know what the capability of a high-school student is. And, and I think employers were actually surprised at what level and value the students brought to the table. We have a company like Amgen who started out with ten students last year. They're already up to twenty-one, twenty-two students that they want to take this year. Hasbro Toy Company took three. They're already up to ten. So, they, you know, the, the private industry really sees the value in this. And I feel like, again, here's an opportunity on, on the municipality side and the government side that also needs to take advantage of it.
How many West Warwick students participated last year?
We only had three. It was a small number. Three or four, I think it was. There is a very small number. We had very few kids apply.
I think you were in competition with CCAP last year, too.
Um, this isn't competition with CCAP.
No, no, but I think, I think CCAP, because CCAP came before the council last year.
Okay, fair enough.
They, they pushed a lot of West Warwick students through CCAP.
Yes.
The last couple of years.
Sure. And very different, yeah, and very different in the, in how we, both equally great, right? Like, CCAP also works with younger students. Ours is a specific junior year, as you're going into your senior year. And we actually map their career interests with their jobs. So, like I mentioned, folks in law enforcement, folks who are interested in government, those are the types of jobs that we would be matching up with those careers.
And that's why I thought it was important to have you come here tonight because I'm not sure exactly where it matches up for the talent, but I think that we could definitely utilize this in some capacity.
Do you have job templates that we could give Chief Verone or Chief Nott?
Absolutely. We have sample job descriptions. And I think, you know, here's where we like to get creative, right? So, a lot of this is about exposure. So, if we have a student who's interested in criminal justice and law enforcement or whatever that looks like, it may not be working alongside a detective where there might be a hot, lot of highly sensitive information. But it could be a supportive role in the back where they're actually being exposed and saying, do I really want to go into law enforcement? Like, this is what I think I want to do. But after seeing the environment, the workflow, so we place people in IT positions, or we'll place them in customer service positions, but within that industry itself. And again, there has to be some touchpoints in learning.
And you said four college credits at Rhode Island College only?
That, it, they're transferable.
Okay.
So, it's a graded class. They get an A through an F. Slightly different than last year, it was a pass/fail. But what we learned this year as students were applying to college is many colleges do not accept a pass/fail transfer for credits. And so, we actually worked with a different institution this year. So, last year, we worked with Roger Williams University. This year, we're with Rhode Island College. We were also very deliberate about going to a state institution because there's greater reciprocity between our state institutions, and we are now grading it so that this way, it is easily transferable. And it's under an experiential learning course, and many colleges are requiring some type of work-based learning or internship as part of their graduation requirements.
And more important, the connections that they're going to make with these, with these places. I know, my daughter ended up, I don't, I don't know how many kids did this, but she ended up turning it into a class this year for school.
She did.
So, she's, it's not paid right now, but she's using it as a class for her senior year.
That's right. We had thirty-six students who ended up doing that out of the hundred and sixty-two who turned it either, either into their senior project, or the employers actually retained them, and they continued as a paid intern under the employer's dime. And, and connections, I mean, unlimited connections. Part of the work that we do is build the social assets of our students. They get to meet the market president of Bank America, the market president of Gilbane. They get to meet C-level executives at Hasbro Toy Company. And they're shaking hands and having lunch and having conversations. And they're learning about the value of networking. I just got an email yesterday from one of our students who was at a board meeting with a company that she's continuing to intern with. And she met the presidents of the colleges, and they were vying for her acceptance. She hadn't even applied to URI. And they said, send us your transcript. She got an email, and they said, we want you. I mean, it happens because of all of this networking that we put in front of them, and they can make those connections.
So, you are working, did you reach out to the schools at all, Jay, when you?
I, I know that, I know that
We did.
when I spoke with Karen, she had already, she had already been working.
They were on it, yeah. Yeah, we, so we've had, I believe it's twenty-two students who applied, who are going through the process right now from West Warwick.
But I mean, I don't know as far as like, I mean, because of the summer, as far as like internship at the school, doesn't really apply as far, from that capacity because of the, the time nature of the internship.
Correct. Correct, yes.
And, yeah, if you want, two chiefs are right behind you. If you want to give each of them?
We'll give you a folder. We brought folders for folks, just for a little bit of information.
And I know Ernie had, Ernie had his ready, I believe.
Yes. You have the whole toolkit. You have the big one.
If you wanted to pass one out to the four, the four of the councilman members here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have mine.
So, unless there are any other questions, I want to thank you for the opportunity and hope that we can figure something out for West Warwick.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I'm hoping so, too. I think it would be awesome for the students of Rhode Island. Just to clarify before anybody, my daughter's not been an intern this year. This would not benefit her at all. She's done. She's graduating in three months. This would benefit the rest of the children of Rhode Island that have applied this year.
That's exactly right. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
Ordinance two thousand nineteen, one, second reading, sponsored by Council President Goslin, and ordinance amending Appendix C Traffic Ordinances of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick Stop Sign at Atwood at Alpine and Navarre Street at Alpine.
I'll move the ordinance.
For a second.
Moving second. We discussed this last meeting. Basically, it's four-way intersection that doesn't really line up. And anybody coming down Navarre, cause right across to Atwood, don't stop. And Alpine runs diagonals. So, I've been sitting there almost every morning myself and watching, watching it happen. And again, I brought this before the Traffic Commission, and they approved it. So, it's before, for second reading tonight. Any questions? Hearing none? Vote call vote. Jack?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Minutes of the previous meeting resolved at the minutes of the February twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, executive session. Joint pre-budget meeting with Town Council, School Committee, and Town Council meeting are hereby approved.
I would make a motion to amend the Town Council meeting minutes. Item R would need to be amended. Under, Resident Peter Calcy made two observations. There were five bullets, and three of those should actually be separate entities. With that amendment, I would move approval.
A second. Moving second. Any discussion? Marion, you got those amendments?
I already amended it for her, and I just let her approve it before I posted.
That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Eyes have it.
Consent agendas, license applications resolved. That the consent agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion on licenses? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Eyes have it. If you've been, if you're here for a license, all licenses have been approved. Pending police fire and tax collector.
Consent agenda correspondence resolved. That the consent agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Just a couple of things that, a couple of towns are looking for support.
And actually, one right-on point with the Barrington and the smoking, that we had that conversation last, at the last meeting. And they're moving forward in the legislature.
Same as we did, yeah?
Yes.
One thing, Channel Ten did run a story on tobacco a few weeks ago, and they did point out two or three communities that are well ahead of all the other communities in the state. West Warwick and Barrington are the top two. So, on the, on the tobacco. Any other questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Eyes have it.
February two thousand and nineteen, monthly financial summary report.
Good evening, councilors. Current year tax.
How about now? Current year tax collections to date total forty-six million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy and ninety-four cents, which is seventy-three point three, three-two percent of the levy. Collections are ahead of where we would expect them to be, given the first and second quarter collections have passed. Prior year tax collections to date are eight hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-one cents, which equals forty-nine point eight-two percent of the budgeted amount. This account was adjusted at the beginning of the year when we reversed the sixty-day collection rule out. It's still trending less than where I would like it to be, but with the tax sale letters out and tax sale collections, hopefully, we'll see it better increase in March and April. Overall revenues are at seventy point seventy-five, seventy point seven-five percent, which is higher than we would expect them to be eight months into the fiscal year. And overall expenditures are trending below target at fifty-nine point four-nine. Again, I, their summary of departmental expenses by department in your packets. The other thing I want to mention is that we are moving forward with Lockbox. And if we, if it goes on schedule and we get all the testing done, and we can get the scan lines on the bills for this upcoming bill in June, then we will not, no longer have three sets of stubs. So, we will not be able to accept payments at the banks anymore. So, if that's the case, and we have it, because the, the banks require the three stubs. They keep a stub, the taxpayer keeps a stub, and a stub, stub comes to us to process the payments. So, we would obviously advertise and let everyone know, you know, by a, a press release in the website and let everyone know that, you know, the, the billing scenario for the bills, where you're going to mail your payment is changing, where you can make your payment is changing. But Lockbox will, will increase our cash flow. We will be getting the, the cash wired into our account daily. We'll get a file that's just uploaded. There won't be any more bins. No more checks sitting around for months.
Be interesting.
So, I just wanted to let you guys know, so you're aware of the path we're taking.
You believe that will be in place?
We're hoping. I'm pushing for it. We just sent them the sample bills, and they have to test it. So, we have, they have to do output files that they send to us. We have to kind of go back and forth. But so far, we are on track.
So, when we, if this is in place, are we going to have something in the tax bills stating that
Yes, absolutely.
you can't go to the bank anymore?
Yes, yeah. Not only would we, we would definitely do an insert the first year to let everyone know. And obviously, all the billing on the bill will change, and any wording about taking it at the bank will change. We would revise it all and then put it on the website, do a press release, put an ad in the paper. Just let them know as well, as much as we can.
So, if we miss a July one date, you have to go full cycle?
Correct. So...
So, I see why you're pushing.
Yes, I am pushing. I think it's important.
Any questions for Kristen on the finance report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Replacement police vehicle resolved. That the Town Council hereby approves the purchase of one new two thousand eighteen-marked Ford Interceptor utility vehicle for use by the Patrol Division to replace a damaged vehicle. The purchase will be made through the Greater Boston Police Council Contract Pricing Agreement and will be funding, funded from the following sources. Trust payment for claim number one-one-one-five-oh-three twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Police car detail fund four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Total expenditure, expenditure twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-five cents.
Move the resolution.
A second.
Moving second. I just want to, before we go on, on H, it had a finance report, but it also says memo, civic center, summary, monthly report.
Those are all part of the finance.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the civic center wasn't.
Anyone have any questions?
All right. Chief?
Sadly, in my memo, I reported that we had an officer involved in a single vehicle crash on February twenty-first. That vehicle has been deemed totaled by the trust. The officer was not injured, fortunately. So, that left us down a frontline vehicle that was relatively new. The replacement value of that is twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. The trust payment was for twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five, which is less the one-thousand-dollar in salvage value. We decided to keep the vehicle for its replacement parts, which are much more valuable than a thousand dollars. So, in addition to the trust claim payment, I'm proposing that we pay the remaining balance of forty-seven hundred dollars, forty-seven hundred, fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents out of the police detail car fund to replace that vehicle.
Those parts are obviously totaled more than that. The reason, is that the reason you're keeping the car?
Right, just the back taillights cost a thousand, five hundred each, so.
I just bought one. I know, a couple hundred dollars easy. Are we taking the radio, the lights, whatever?
Everything is moving over. The only other additional, the two front grille lights and one headlight flasher. So, we're purchasing three lights for four hundred and change, which is included in this.
Any questions for the chief? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Eyes have it.
Addition of taxes resolved. That the attached additions in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirteen cents presented to the tax assessor for approval of the Town Council in accordance with Article Twenty-Five, Section Five of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the office of the tax assessor.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Eyes have it.
Amplifier, loudspeaker. Amplifier, loudspeaker, and theatrical performances, show exhibitions license resolved that the Town Council hereby approves the following amended date changes. Stellar Entertainment Group, Inc., doing business as Garden Brothers Circus, Attention Niles Garden, date April 10, 2019, April 11, 2019, time 4:30 PM to 7:30 PM. Location, West Warwick Civic Center, 100 Factory Street.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to ask, Laura, does that change the income at all because you're moving off?
No, they're just changing the date.
But one was a Friday previously, I think?
Yeah, it doesn't change.
It won't?
No.
I know that they're going to be at the Ryan Center the day before.
Yep, they're going to be there. And it actually works out much better for me, just because they will be here on a Wednesday, Thursday, gives me Friday to completely clean out the place and then we have a craft show on Saturday.
Okay.
So actually, it was, it was like God sent them, they said it. I was like, yeah, perfect, yep, no problem.
Are we on the circus? Is that what we're talking?
Yeah.
I, I received an email that says the applica, I don't think, I don't know if it matters anything, but all, everything in writing says four thirty PM to seven thirty PM.
Mm-hmm.
Like through.
Yeah, it's four thirty and.
Seven, yeah, so you know about that?
Yeah.
All right.
Say it again?
It's a four thirty show and a seven thirty show.
Yeah, the application.
They were two-towed.
The application says forty thirty through seven thirty.
The application says four thirty and seven thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But everything else says four thirty to seven thirty. Does that, I mean, I'm sure it's a typo somewhere, so.
Yeah, I just.
Which is it? Which is it? Is it two shows?
It's four thirty and seven thirty.
Two shows.
Four shows in total.
Yeah.
Any concerns on that?
No.
Somebody, we cannot have the circus, is there a typo in the circus? Come on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, should we make, should we?
Opposed?
Opposed, opposed, no. Yes, I'm saying no.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Laura.
Next year, I'm going to recruit another vote next year, somewhere along the way.
Discussion action, application for FEMA SAFER grant sponsored by Council President Gosman.
Chief?
Hey, I, thank you for attention to this. I did hand out some sheets, just kind of going over what the numbers are for the SAFER grant. So this, this grant is given by the, by FEMA to add additional personnel to fire departments throughout the country. And many departments in our area have taken advantage of this program. So the first page, you'll, you'll see the year and one, two, and three for the different years, the salary and the, the different listings for benefits. And if you come down to the town share, third line from the bottom, you see is the total of the salary and benefits together. And the town share for the first two years would be twenty-five percent of the salary and benefits. And the federal share would be seventy-five percent of the salary and benefits. If you follow those lines across the third year, the federal share goes down to thirty-five percent and our share would go up to sixty-five percent. And all the way on the right-hand side, the town share for annually, well, for the, the life of the three-year grant would be six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And the federal share would be eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars, making the grant total one point four eight one million dollars, roughly. So that, that would be the expense. The second page is, this, by acquiring eight individuals and putting two on each of the four groups, we would reduce overtime on occasion. And the overtime figures I have on the second page that has hours per shift, forty-two is the average hours worked per week by the firefighter, times fifty-two weeks, is twenty-one hundred and eighty-four hours. These individuals will be entitled to take ten days vacation. So you can see I did five times twenty-four, it's a hundred and twenty hours, I subtracted that out, and the math that I used to calculate savings was reduced by those hours. So we took the two thousand, sixty-four hours by the middle firefighter, third-class overtime rate, and that came out to four hundred and ninety-one thousand change. The grant is for three years and it would, it would start as soon as the firefighters start training. So it would take them about five months to do their training, so the math that I have before you, I put two and a half years times that annual savings. That comes out to one point two million dollars. So when you subtract out, and if we go to the next page, you can see in each of the years, there's, there's two columns for each year. So the potential reduction in that first year is that same four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. I divided that in half because they would, in the first year, they would only be eligible to work, replace like in overtime for half of that year. So it'd be two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Now, the town share for their salaries in that same time is a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So we would have a savings of about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in the first year. In the second year, we have that, that same number, that four hundred and ninety-one thousand. Town share would be a hundred and sixty thousand, and the reason for that increase would be the step increases that the firefighters have through their contract as a second-year firefighter. And the potential savings would be three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, in the third year, our share goes up significantly, it goes from twenty-five percent up to sixty-five percent, and our share would be three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. However, would still show a conservative savings of a hundred and three thousand dollars. And you can see at the bottom, all the federal shares. So again, on the right-hand side that's shaded, you can see the five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars is roughly over the course of the, the grant, what, what the town could see for savings. And I did those numbers conservatively, I think that they would be higher.
So chief, in the fourth year, there's no maintenance effort?
There is not.
No, there's no.
There is not, there's not. During the course of the year, though, we have to backfill like, so our, our staffing, line staffing would go from sixty to sixty-eight, and if someone else retires, we do need to replace them for the life of the grant. After the grant is over, there's no, you don't have to maintain that staffing level.
Question?
Jack?
So this is a few, a few men over the minimum manning requirement, correct?
Correct.
So if we get to an issue where we have fifteen men, somebody gets sick, somebody gets hurt, somebody calls out, do we have to replace them for that shift with another firefighter going on, on duty, or?
The minimum staffing, the contractual minimum staffing does not change.
Okay.
Okay, so these.
And these are, they're, I mean, they're, they're, they're regular firefighters, they, I mean, they're not, they're not, I'm just clarifying.
But no, I think I understand what Jay's asking. So if this, if we staff seventeen per shift?
Yeah.
Which, which your goal is?
Yep.
Two guys call out, there's fifteen, we don't have to bring seventeen in, we can stay at fifteen.
Correct. We stay at fifteen. That's the minimum staffing. If everyone comes in, we'll have seventeen.
Seventeen.
Right.
Yep.
Is that what you're, that's what you were asking?
So do we have to, do we have to offer it as well, though? Like, somebody, somebody gets sick, they can't come in, we're down to fourteen, but we know we have these two extras.
No, no, you're going to have seventeen per shift. If, if out of those seventeen, fifteen of our normal, they're going to consider the normal high rate.
Right, right.
So if two, two veterans call out and we still have fif, now, even with those two guys, we have fifteen, we don't have to call anybody in. Now, if three guys call out, we, yes, we have to bring it back.
To make the minimum manning, yes.
Yes.
All right.
Yep. So that's, that's pretty much the program.
And again, this is contingent, and you said it takes, last week, about three months to find out?
Yes, so the deadline to submit is Friday. We have gone through and done our narratives, we're prepared to submit the application, but we'd like the council's approval to, to go forward with this. And in years past, grants have been awarded to different communities throughout the country and then not been taken up. And so that, they actually, FEMA would like to see a, a letter from the municipality saying that they are on board with this.
And why would, why would we not, why would someone not take it up?
Well, I, I don't know. I don't know, quite honestly.
It could be proffered during collective bargaining, that if the Town Council is admitting through this letter that they need eight more people, whether it's to a FEMA grant or not, it could be used against you. So that's just one of the items that could possibly, I'm not saying it will, but it could come up. Especially if you're not successful at collective bargaining and the matter goes before arbitration, and arbitrator's going to see this letter in his packet of exhibits. And that's where somebody might change their mind after getting approved and say, you know what, we're not going to go down this road.
And not, not to, you know.
See that the chief hasn't pulled his side, but you haven't heard the union agree with
what Council President Gosman said about overtime, so I know what the chief is saying, but sometimes when the union and chief don't agree on issues pertaining to collective bargaining, that causes a problem for the town. So, I mean, you might want to, I know you need to be, have this sent out by Friday, but you're really not, you're not giving the council a lot of time to make a decision about something that's very important.
Listen, Timmy, you know, I, I can agree and disagree with you on that. As far as this goes, I, I think it's a good idea. I think, you know, by putting seventeen men on a shift temporarily, we can also, it's a trial basis, it's a three-year trial. We could see if it's going to save in overtime. We can see, us, our men and women will be safer on the road, obviously, if they got two extra people. If anybody showed up on the scene, it's, it's, it's very hectic, things can happen. I, I, I think it's a great addition. The third year, yeah, we're going to have to figure out where to get that money. But if we're saving it in overtime and we're helping the safety of our men and women, and I keep saying men and women, I know we don't have any women firefighters, but in case we do, that, this, this would be a, a test for councils too, also, because one of the biggest things we brought up in your budget last night has been overtime. It's always been a stressful matter here in town, and if, if you bring in eight guys and overtime's still at one point two million or whatever is in your budget, then we're going to say this isn't working, something's happening. If they're, you know, because, because I'm going to look at it as, as Timmy just said, now, there is part of the union that says, well, this is overtime that I may never get again, and now you're affecting my Wednesday paycheck. So that could be an issue on the union's side, but that's just, but that, we should not worry about whether or not they're getting overtime or not. It's not, you should never depend on overtime in your paycheck.
Is there a chance, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't think that firefighters would think that way, but I, I understand that that is a.
There is some.
You know, so, go ahead.
Is there a chance with all this, I know it's just numbers on paper, is there a chance that this would not be a cost savings? And after a year, even if, if it's a year, it's a trial, there is a, a cost, another cost to the town that we don't have in our budget? Is that a?
You're speculating only because the chief can tell you if everything ran according to schedule, he could tell you exactly what overtime was going to be before it even started. But in the fire department, things don't run on schedules, so if there was, you know, say another catastrophe like the station fire or some bigger building or apartment complex, his overtime budget could be shot within the matter of, you know, a couple of weeks. So it's difficult to answer that question, but to answer it is, it's going to be, you speculate, speculating on one end, but on the other, of course, the numbers could be different, they could be lower, they could be higher.
I think your question was going to be, can you opt out after year one?
That was my next, part of the question, yes. Just in case, for some reason, it doesn't, you know, it, it's all great on paper, but if it's not working the way you see it or we see it or the firemen see it.
No, once, once you accept that contract, you're, you're bound for the three years.
Ernie, do you have any thoughts on that?
Historically, you're going to end up owning these guys.
Can I, do you know of any communities in Rhode Island that have availed themselves of this?
Yes, several. Warwick's done it, Cranston's done it, Providence has done it.
And their experience has been?
North Providence, Smithfield. Have, have taken, yes, have, have taken SAFER grants.
Okay. And do you know happy, unhappy?
I think everyone's been happy with the program.
Including the firefighters?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yep.
I, I would be.
That's, you know, I, I do want to say, when you, you brought that up, other costs that I did not, and I apologize for not putting them in here. Is there turnout gear? You know, the cost of training them? With their salaries and benefits are covered during the grant, but the cost of training them is not.
What's, so what would that number?
About thirty-one hundred dollars an individual, and their turnout gear is about four thousand dollars.
An individual?
An individual.
So you're looking about seven thousand dollars times eight, fifty-six thousand dollars. So that would have to be put into the cost into this year's.
Yes, that would be.
Is that only the first year?
Yeah, it's a one-time, it's a one-time, one-time thing, so eight times seven, fifty-six, oh, fifty-six thousand dollars.
Turnout gear in the budget, that's not included? You said there'd be ten, that had to be re.
Yes, no, it's every, ten years that the turnout gear needs to be replaced.
Right.
And right now, we're down, thirty sets are going to expire in 2020.
Thirty sets, right.
Because, yeah, well, they, they got sixty sets in 2010 through a grant.
This is, this is separate from that.
It is, yes.
So that would be, if we were to go with this, that would have to be added, that fifty-six thousand to this year's budget. Correct, Ernie?
Yes, yes, I can answer that, that, that would, we would have to, that would have to come from my budget.
Be more than fifty-six thousand. It'd be eight times the twenty-five percent.
Plus the turnout gear.
Unless you can guarantee the overtime will go down. It won't go down for set, five months.
It won't go down in the first five months, and, and there could be some overlapping for fiscal, it might not line up with the fiscal year, you know, we were probably more than likely starting September.
The training.
Yeah. So, you know, so the realization would have to be done, you know, not as clear with a fiscal budget, you know, overlapping.
What's your opinion, Ernie?
Chief, let me ask you, the.
Yep.
Since the first, the training period is not covered, I mean, there would be no overtime savings. The, after that, there would be.
Yes.
Would you have an idea of how much, if this were approved, the town would have to expend upfront before the savings could be materialized for overtime?
Okay, well, what I would do is I'd refer to the third page, right, of, second page. Third page, it's a hundred and eleven thousand dollars would be the town's share, so, for the whole year, so it would be half of that, it would be fifty-six thousand dollars in that area for salaries, and then the other is fifty-six also, right? Yeah, so, you know, it's about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in that first six months.
And conceivably, would you be able to reduce your budget by that amount if, if, you know, to cover that, or?
So, you know.
If not, then we'd have to supplement that with some other revenue source.
So the predict, prediction for that first year savings is a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, so that would be, yes, pretty much a wash.
Yeah, considering that the, the savings would be approximate to what we'd be paying for that fiscal year, I would recommend the council authorize the grant to be filed and hopefully it will be successful. The funding that would be needed would be offset by the overtime savings during that period of time, so it, it does appear that, again, with the additional firefighters on period of time, so it, it does appear that, again, with the additional firefighters on per shift, again, not counting toward any minimum manning, that savings could be achieved in, you know, the long-term, as the chief had indicated, and with the ability of not having a requirement to maintain that number going forward, these officers, these firefighters would be, I'm sure, absorbed in the regular, regular department without having to, you know, hire additional firefighters, so we would be going back to that level after the agreement ends, or at that point, the town could, if it's, if it realizes the savings as predicted and overtime does go down, then a decision could be made to, you know, keep that staffing level on. So it seems like there is options available to the town to see if this is worthwhile or not.
How, how are those funds received, and when are they received?
Um, they are received through electronic transfer, you know, you mean the timeframe that we, that we would receive them?
So do we get the grant at the end of this, the year? When do we get the, the money?
Yes, I believe we get it toward the, at the end. I, I don't think they front-load it.
Let me ask you this.
Yes.
So they signed this three-year grant with us, year one, could they cut it on year end on year two?
Absolutely, it's the federal government.
If the president or whoever, Congress comes in and says, we're cutting this and that, can they affect?
Obviously, if, if they cut it, then, you know, it's, yeah, the whole, the whole thing would be null and void.
But then you wouldn't be bound, you wouldn't.
Well, wait a minute, hold on a minute.
Yep, yep.
Unless, unless it says that it's null and void, and I don't think we've seen that.
So I'd have to go through the, the notice of funding opportunity.
The second question would be, if the application is accepted and Westwark gets approved, is there a second ratification by the council to accept the monies? Or is it full steam ahead?
You said they want to.
So we still have to.
You have to apply.
We still have to apply, and then we would have to accept the grant again.
But so the, the council has a second opportunity to look at this with a little more detail, to ratify the contract in the event Westwark gets awarded it.
Uh, yeah, we have an opportunity to reject at, at the end.
You did say they want a letter, though, that says.
They want a letter ahead that's saying that you're, you're behind it, so.
So are we bound if we get it, then? If we have a letter?
Well, no, again, when, when the award comes out, you have thirty days to accept or reject a grant, a FEMA grant.
And I assume if we reject it, we'll never get one again?
Probably not.
Well.
Fair enough, yeah.
This, this happened, I think in 2010, in West Walgreens.
It's also, also happened in 1993 in Westwark with the police, when Clinton put more cops on the street, and both times, the town ended up keeping them on at the town's expense. And, and my experience is overtime did not go down at all, because these guys that are going to get hired, once they're after their first year, are going to get overtime just like the other guys get.
Well, like I said, we've got three years to experiment.
Can I ask you one more question?
Yes.
When you said about receiving the funds, you said receiving the federal funds at the end of the grant, you mean end of the year, each year?
Each year, done in period of performance, so.
So there's a cash flow that's issued?
They're not, they're not always on top of when they, it's usually the end of their fiscal year. How long the process take, any idea, from, from?
From submission to award, it's usually about three months.
All right, so you're looking at, so probably almost next fiscal year, getting the money?
Yes.
Yeah, it would be in.
Twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty, yeah, yeah, no, it would definitely be in twenty-twenty.
Right.
You know, assuming that we were, we were lucky enough to get awarded the money.
Right.
Getting into the training academy that would be starting in September.
Of twenty.
Of twenty, no, no, 2019, but it would be fiscal year 2020.
Right, but what happens if you get the money at the end of fiscal year twenty? You know, I mean, you almost got eighteen months before you're going to collect the money, just because the federal government moves slowly.
So, I, I wish I, I, you know, I, I'm not sure.
I'd be naive, but it's too fuma, so, I mean, do they usually cut grants on people midway through?
There are.
Even if we do change administration, that might sound naive, but, I mean, that's.
Ask, ask the people in Natick how they felt about FEMA after the flood.
So, I, I've not heard of FEMA, you know, doing anything with their, their grants like that.
Probably not, but the, the federal government can.
I think they could, but, I mean, that's.
Will they? Probably not, but the question was, can they? The answer is yes.
So.
Jay?
I'm probably leaning more conservative. I don't want to say, put it in, what I'd like to say is, put the grant in, my, my opinion, put it in, but I, I don't want to commit to, to giving a yes or no. And I don't mean to, I'm not trying to be a hypocrite, but I know you only have three days to, to submit. I'd rather probably have another meeting and, and talk about, you know, this is very quick, you know, giving about twenty minutes of, of looking at this to, to, to be bound for three years, that's, I'd rather digest a little bit more.
So I think.
Which doesn't help you, I know.
I think what you said, though, is we have another chance to say no, if indeed we are fortunate enough to be awarded the money, maybe going against the letter saying we're going to accept it, but that's the reality of it.
Yes.
So we have time to research, research a little more in the next three months.
Chief of Times were good here, I don't think this would be, we wouldn't be looking at like this.
I think that's what happened in 2010.
But now, but it's, but it's not, I mean, we're, we have some financial.
So, again, you know, I think that's one of the reasons that the federal government's putting these things out there for communities that are in trouble.
He's the burden on each community.
Yeah, you know, but, okay.
There's also one other plus on this. You have two per shift. Like I said, safety's one thing, but also throughout the years, and say, three years, all of a sudden, eight guys retire, we have eight people already trained, and we've reduced that headache come three years from now. So you've got to look at it.
There's positives and negatives.
There's all positives, all negatives, but again.
Boy, you're dealing with a lot of money here, so, you know, that's just my thoughts.
With a potential half-million dollar savings?
Yes, and again, I, I went conservative on that, I think the savings would be higher than, than that, but.
Any questions from, for the chief, any further question? With that being said, Jay, you gave your consensus, Mary Beth?
I should just roll, roll call, make it easy.
I would, I would submit the letter, yes.
Absolutely, submit.
Yes, I'll support it.
I'll support it, thank you, thank you.
West War hazard mitigation plan surveys sponsored by Councilwoman Lachardi.
So a hazard mitigation team has been put in place. I was notified by, by Mark Crullo, he, he wanted a member of the council to be there, police department, DPW, fire, sewer, planning, school committee. And, and the goal is to discuss and rank a variety of, of the natural hazards that we have concern for the town. It was an online survey that was developed to help the committee identify public concerns and possible areas of improvement to make Westwark more resilient to storms. So talking about drainage, and we know we have drainage problems here as well, and we wanted to identify the critical infrastructure and community assets that are at risk of those national, natural hazards, like dams. A dislister spoke, just spoke about the, the floods of 2010, that would be an example, flood-prone roads, neighborhoods, water and wastewater systems, first responder facilities, populations, schools, businesses, and historic resources. So the goal of the survey is, there are three goals, to protect the lives and property of West Walgreens residents, to protect West Walgreens' critical facilities and infrastructure, and reduce economic losses and minimize disruption to local businesses. And the third is to protect West Walgreens' culture, historical, natural, and economic resources, and minimize social dislocation and stress. So a survey's placed online on the website, I'm sure not many of the public know about it, we're, we're doing some different things to get the word out there, so I encourage everyone to, to go to the, go to the website and scroll down and find the survey, if you're interested, take the survey, submit it. You know, we find is, is, is people don't, as you see the, the budget meeting, not many people attend, that doesn't mean they're not concerned, some people like to view from their home, but this is an easy way to be involved with the town and get your input across. That's all.
Any questions for Jay on that? Thank you, Jay.
Town council sponsoring $100 donation for t-shirts to Arctic Village Association, sponsored by Councilwoman Lachardi.
This is quick, this is, as you know, Earth Day is coming up, and, and the Arctic Village Association, led by Barbara Tabak, put the, put a lot of time into Earth Day and the coordination, and they're looking for sponsors to be placed on a t-shirt, which everybody who participates in Earth Day would get, to, to help fund this. And I just figured we have that account for nonprofit advertisements, it's not, it won't be in a book, but I'm looking at, not our picture on the t-shirt, but, but the town seal, and just shows it's a hundred dollars.
Yeah, they're going to use it, they're going to use, they're going to use to clean the sidewalks with it.
But, but it'd be, I'm thinking of the town seal, just to show that our support for the Earth Day, so the cost would be a hundred dollars, so.
Can we also, can we put an item on the next agenda for Earth? Yeah, well, no, but it, it ties into this, so I agree with, yes.
So I, I, can I give Barbara a yes to?
Yes.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Messy was there as well.
I just want to make sure we put it on the agenda next time to let everybody know that it's April thirteenth, the cleanup, so we can discuss it at the next meeting. I know we can't really get into it now, but, so people know that it's the thirteenth.
Okay, letter M is claims approved and denied. Speaking to Councilwoman Williamson, we actually talked about doing this a different way, all separate, one at a time, and there's eleven of them. It's approval or deny by the council, with department head's recommendation is in each, is in each one of the claims, so we go through each and every one, so what I would do after we, we remove Robert Spiegel, and then go through the claim, discuss it, if you want to approve or deny, that's how we're going to do each one from here on out.
So I'd move Robert Spiegel.
I'll second.
Discussion. Again, if you look, department head says, I've received a review to Spiegel claim, there was a major pothole in that location on the London Turnpike, but it was filled the day before. I've included the daily report from DPW, this pothole was filled on the 25th of February, therefore, there was no pothole said date. He recommends committee deny claim. It's up to you, approve or deny.
He said it had.
There was a pothole the day before, but the day that he said it happened, the pothole wasn't there.
He said Jan, you said February, right?
Pothole was filled on 25th of February.
Because it says here, the date and time of incident was January 26th, January 26th. And the date claim was filed was January 29th.
So he's saying there was no pothole there when?
Well, no, it says there was no pothole on.
February.
On, in February, yeah. So if you look at that.
So which month are we talking about?
Freddie said the pothole was filled.
Send it back to Fred.
Send it back and table it and.
Table it and go back.
Because you've got two separate ones.
Yeah.
Mr. Prince, is there a public comment on this?
Not really, Tom, why, what's up?
I don't know this guy from Adam, however.
If you want, just come through, I'll let you comment real quick.
I'm going to make this very quick.
I don't know who this guy is, but I read through these things, and there is a mistake, it's probably a typo on the letter, because it says February.
Right.
And there was no pothole that day, but the actual incident took place in January. I personally have witnessed, you probably, Jason, he probably has witnessed, some of these holes are getting filled twice a day.
It's the rain and everything.
Exactly, exactly, so, so they may have filled it and then blown out the same day.
But Tom, we asked for a picture also, and if there's no picture provided.
I've never seen a picture on any of these.
They, they normally don't come on here on that day.
Oh, okay.
But usually, when you, usually you take a picture with your cell phone, you fill out the police report, a lot of people have, the other day, in fact, a lady was here with her claim, I was in the office, and she asked to print up the pictures in the office so they can have them.
Okay, I didn't realize pictures were required.
And there's, I don't know if there was or wasn't, so we can table this and give it back to Freddie and get it clarified for next month.
No hit on the DPW, of course, but some of the, they blow out, they, you know, twice in the, exactly, exactly, I understand that. So just denying that one, I thought might be, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's table, make a motion to table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Move Dorian Ravel.
I'll second.
Sorry.
Discussion. Again, pothole on New London Turnpike, police report also attached, with three estimates. We were notified by the issue, the problem had been rectified temporarily, this is a problem will be fixed permanently in the spring. I suggest that the claims committee approve this one for $157. Any questions on that?
Move approval.
Second.
Move. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Keep going.
Michelle Pettis.
Second.
Move a second, discussion. This one here, the amount for the claim was $696. Unfortunately, we only go to 300 for maximum recovery.
And it is, again, the London Turnpike.
Is, is there any way on these, when we have an address, because, face it, we're going to be looking at New London Turnpike and Church Street for ninety-nine percent of these, and there's multiple on New London Turnpike, and multiple on Church Street. Can we get some type of location? When I, when I call DPW, and I say there's a pothole on Church Street, I, I need to give them, I'd like to give them it's across from Orchard, or it's right near St. Mary's, so that way, you know, because.
Well, this one, it does, it does on the police report, voluntary accident, accident report, it says nearest landmark or street, heading north about fifty feet from Ty Oak-Gav intersection.
I'm just looking more where it says, I reviewed the, the Peters claim, there was a major pothole in that location on the London Turnpike.
Well, there's been, yeah, there's constantly things popping up there, and that is a tough area, because it's, you know, like I've said before, the DOT calls it the viewing triangle, because there's like a section that's ours, a section that's, belongs to the state, and a section that belongs to Coventry, but I, I think, I, I think they've been trying to get out there fairly quickly to, to fill them.
No, that, that's.
So you just want Fred to put the landmark in there?
More, more detail, we're going to be reading these, like these, I'd like more detail.
Well, it, it is in there when you look at the affidavit and, that follow it.
Police report, so that's why he's saying it was at that location.
Yeah.
So, and, and it is saying that it's fifty feet from the Ty Oak intersection, so coming down to London to Ty Oak, it was fifty feet from there, so they, they were saying roughly where it is.
I move that we accept this claim.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Jason Silveira.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Again, claim, pothole location, one of the Turnpike, plus you, three estimates, we were notified, same problem. Let's see.
Maximum recovery.
Forty feet from Clear Street is where this happened. Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Talia Anzavino.
Again, New London Turnpike.
Need a second.
A second.
New London Turnpike, three estimates were provided, there, yeah, claims committee does say recommend to pay $227.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Move a second, discuss, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
David Hanson, Jr.
Second.
Discussion. Again, this one's Main Street in Poloski, police report, attached three estimates, notified of issue, rectified temporarily, fixed in the spring, pothole of 19788.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
I think it's supposed to be Amy Saint-Amand, not amend, A-M-A-N-D, according to the police report.
Yep.
Need a second?
Come on, guys.
Second.
Again, recommended.
New London Turnpike.
New London Turnpike.
Move approval.
Second.
Says keeps washing out, exactly what Mr. Oates said back there, keeps washing out. So, that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
John Maxime.
A second.
Discussion.
Move approval.
Pay 183.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Ryan Crane.
Second.
Discussion, $181. Again, New London Turnpike.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ironically, ironically, those tires were put on a week before that poth- two weeks before that pothole she caused us.
Steven Peolino.
Second.
Discussion.
It's fifty bucks.
Move the claim.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Austin Damada.
Second. Go on, a second.
Second.
It's a different situation, it's, because it didn't, wasn't filed in time?
Wasn't filed in time, not valid, I suggest the Claim Committee be denied now. I mean, we can change that, or we can keep it.
Oh.
I don't see any.
Way did it take place again?
That's what I'm trying to find.
Turnpike headed toward ninety-five, Ty Oak Gav. So, that could be Coventry, right? I don't know, is there a police report that states, do they state exactly where, um?
That's what I'm looking for, cause heading towards.
That's why the detail would be, you know.
Well, this, this is actually, this was, the other thing too, was, it didn't say what he hit. It doesn't even say a pothole, and this is the one where he blew his motor after his oil pan.
It was an, oh, oil pan, it wasn't a tire.
It wasn't a tire, it was an oil pan, he blew his motor, driving down ninety-five or something, so. Again, if he's driving towards Ty, from Ty Oak, it doesn't even say, like, he hit what he hit, it just says, he got an oil pan, I don't, I don't know, the plug didn't fall out.
I can't really read what it says.
He said the car slammed down, doesn't, with, it says car slammed down, something asphalt.
I can't make it out on my phone.
Drove home, oil lights came on, parked in puddle of oil, so.
This is abandoned car.
Abandoned car.
But it says on his affidavit, it just says due to hitting pothole. And this was on two, occurred on two twenty-eight.
You can table it if you want more info.
I'd, I'd rather, I, I'd like to table it.
All right, make a motion to table?
If he blew his motor, I'm telling you, it's more than three hundred an hour, and if he abandoned the car.
I'm, I'm, all I'm, I just, because if they're saying, you know, they, they hit a pothole on New London Turnpike, I mean.
Why don't we table it?
Make a motion to table?
Second.
The only thing I'd ask for more information is where on New London Turnpike heading towards ninety-five, cause that is a Coventry section, once you get over that hill.
There's no police, this is just a petition, there's no police report?
No. Nothing's thrown out properly.
We've moved to table.
We tabled?
Oh, we made a, aye.
Thank you.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Appeals Board, one alternate member term to expire ten twenty-one. West Wallack Public Library Trustees, four three-year terms. Board of Attendant Affairs, one term to expire two twenty-one. Board of Assessment and Review, one three-year term. Board of Cambusers and Registration, one six-year term. Two alternate members for six-year term. Kent County Water Authority, one seven-year term. Recreation Committee, one full term. Pension Board Committee, one full term to expire eleven eighteen twenty twenty. Public comment, comments will only be addressed in the Town Council, will take them under advisement. When addressing the Town Council, please state your name and address, please conduct yourself in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens assessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this party, but heard as requested.
Go ahead, do you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Sheila Savini, and it's two thirty-one Washington Street. Some of you are already aware of a problem that we're having, we're trying to open up a restaurant at two thirty-one Washington Street. It's a small, oh, sorry, um, a small takeout restaurant with about fifteen to twenty seats, predominantly takeout. Um, the problem that we've been up against for the last eight weeks is, um, what is actually required by the sewer department to put the restaurant or the building up to code for commercial bill, uh, business? So, um, currently, um, we have done a camera test to find out what's currently in the, in the building. Um, we've been advised by, um, a representative from the sewer department to hire a civil engineer, do a camera test of the existing sewer, and have the civil engineer do a current plan, a potential plan, turn it in with the application. Um, the cost for that is about six or seven thousand dollars. By the time you hire the engineer, pay for the camera test, send in the application to the sewer department. The problem is, is that everybody that we talk to, as far as sewer contractors, they're telling us that the price between what potentially could be done versus what might, might be required to be done is probably thirty or forty thousand dollar difference in price. So, for instance, um, we're offering to do a grease trap, a manhole for testing, a separate lateral for the actual restaurant itself, um, and then a backflow valve to prevent it from mixing in with the rest of the units in the building. Unfortunately, and that's like about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars between engineering and sewer contractor. We're willing to do something like this. The problem comes in is that we can't really get anybody to commit if that's what we need to do. So, the additional representation from the sewer department, potentially, is to put three separate laterals for all three businesses, of which, I don't know why they would need to be changed, because they're existing businesses that don't have a lot of sewerage use. And we can't really seem to get an answer of what our investment's going to be. So, we're talking twenty to fifty thousand dollars, and in order to find out what that answer is, we gotta spend seven to find out. So, I guess at this point, what we're looking for is some help from the sewer committee, which I apologize that we missed that meeting, but I, but I was working late, and the Town Council, of how we can find out exactly what is required to do for a circumstance like this. Um, this building's been in business since the nineteen thirties, it's been a gas station, it's been a restaurant, it's been a laundromat, and now all of a sudden, we have to revamp the entire sewerage for the whole building. And to me, we just, like, we need something solid that says this is what you need to do, so we can present, find out what the cost is going to be, and see if we're willing to make that investment. But we can't figure out what the cost is.
Let me ask you a question, and I, I'm gonna ask both of you, cause I'm here on the Sewer Committee. Is there a possibility of scheduling a meeting with Jim Jeremia, Bob Rose, and yourselves to sit down all in one room?
Well, hang, hang on a minute here.
No, no.
We, we spent some time, a few times, on the phone at length, for probably an hour, half hour at a time, on different conversations. I did speak with Jim Jeremia, um, about this, he is aware of it. Bob, you're dealing with Bob Rose?
Yeah.
Who works, who works for Jim Jeremia. I've sent Jim Jer- Jeremia the emails that you have sent me.
Okay.
So, as far as requirements, and then our conversation, it was, there are, when I spoke with Jim, he had mentioned, similar to what you said, it's been different businesses throughout time. And then, when a restaurant comes in, that triggers the sewer department. So, yes, the laterals need to be done, yes, it needed to be cambered, cause they didn't know what was in the lines. Um, and then the backflow preventer, the grease trap, is that's all normal for a restaurant.
For, so is it normal for a lateral for just the restaurant? Or do we need laterals for all three businesses?
But that's something where, the last we left it, the conversation, this has gone over a two-week span, was, I forwarded the last email to Jim Jeremia, and he mentioned that he would be giving this to Bob Rose, and he would be in contact with you. That's how it was left, and that was, I rece- I did receive an email last Friday, I did forward that right after that.
Okay, good.
So, today's Tuesday, so whether.
No, I think it was.
So if he didn't.
Yeah, I think it's been a little.
You sent me one Friday.
I sent it, no, I sent it like Monday or Tuesday, and then I sent the second one Friday, following up.
So, I followed up on my end, so right now, it's in the hands of, of our engineer.
Okay.
And he's telling me that he's sending that to Bob Rose, who works for him, and he will be getting back to you. That's where we left it. As far as getting an answer from me, I, I can't give you that answer.
You, no, 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 and I'm aware that you guys were not going to be able to have an actual answer. I think my purpose for coming up here right now is that we can't really seem to get an answer from the people who have answers or can give us an answer.
Has your engineer showed the plans to Jeremiah and it's?
No, because that costs five thousand dollars.
To show him the plan?
You gotta draw them.
We gotta draw them, yeah, so.
Okay.
It costs, it, it's basically, um, we have to present, we have to send in the application with the application, which is seven hundred dollars. With the application, you have to have the current plans in place, which we, and the camera testing.
Right, so that's done?
No, it's not done, because we don't know if we wanna spend the money be, at this point, and if it's gonna be a fifty thousand dollar project, why do we wanna spend seven to find that out? That's like saying, okay, we want, I wanna build a house, but, um, I'm gonna spend like seven thousand for you to tell me what my budget should be.
So, did you, did you have it cambered yet?
Yeah, so we've had the camera.
Okay.
But.
So.
At this point.
Do you have the results of the camera test?
We have the results.
You have the results personally?
We have the results, and we have forwarded them to an engineer. That engineer can do those civil plans for the current plan that's there, and a potential plan, in order to turn in the application. That costs six thousand dollars.
Cause I, I was told that, uh, from our.
And that's where we're at.
From our sewer engineer, that that was a requirement, and they had given you, uh, multiple engineers that they deal with.
Yes, and we used one of those.
From them.
Yes, so, and here's, and so now.
So the ball was, so now it's on you?
So we're at that point, we're at that point now. So, the problem is, is when we say to the engineer, okay, um, you know, what do you think, like, here are the contractors, what they, what needs to be done, the engineer says, well, I think that the manhole and a separate lateral, the backflow valve and a grease trap would definitely sound reasonable. Okay, so he can do all these plans up, and we're gonna tend, send them in, and it's gonna cost six thousand dollars to do that, okay? Which is fine, but there's nothing that guarantees that that suggestion is going to be accepted. So at that point, they could come back and say, oh, no, you need separate laterals. Now it's turned into a fifty thousand dollar project, and it cost us six thousand to find out, we don't wanna do it.
There was a meeting set up, correct, Ernie?
A few weeks ago, I think, we had a meeting set up, and with Jim Jeremia, myself, and, uh, I think yourself, and, uh, that was canceled.
Okay.
So, I, I will say, I, I've seen this in the past, and I understand fully what she's dealing with, because I'll use All Stars Bar and Grill now to pizza parlor, uh.
West House.
How many years was that, Mr. Taco? Then it went to another name, and then it went to All Stars, All Stars moves in. They got the grease trap, everything inside, they buy the building, it's been how many restaurants? For how many years? All of a sudden, closing comes, everything's done, ready to open. The sewer department says, nope, you gotta put a giant manhole and grease trap in the middle of your parking lot. Well, wait a minute, wait, I've gone through everything here, and now, and it's been a restaurant for all these years, and Bob Rose decides he wants to put a manhole in the middle of a parking lot for a cleanup. It's never been there before. Now, that was a thirty-five thousand dollar expense for a guy who already just closed and ready to open up that following week. So, I can understand, I, I'll be honest with you, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak on her behalf. If I'm gonna spend fifty thousand dollars to get a sewer line, which, for a, a, a small business, to correct a building that's been there for hun- almost a hundred years, I'm not sure if I'd even step foot into that building and open up a business, I'll be honest, that's just, that's a poor investment.
And that's where we're at, that's where we're at, like, we're willing to back out if it's gonna be that high, but if it's a something reasonable.
Have you been given a price like that? Just curious.
Yes, we have, we've been giving contractors, I've given, told us, like, literally, we've had three separate, um, sewer contractors that said, if you have to do three separate laterals, we're talking about breaking up the floor of two current businesses that are already opening, that are already opened, and use no water other than a toilet and to wash the hands.
The two was photography?
One's a photographer and one's a barber shop, who doesn't even wash here. It's strictly just a bathroom where they wash hands to go to the bathroom.
So it's been my experience that Jim Jeremia understands the cost of getting him involved sooner rather than later is the best answer. So, I would recommend that a meeting take place, he, he is more than willing to do that.
Yeah.
So, we as a group don't have the expertise to answer that question, to be honest with you. So, I would suggest that you, uh, reschedule that meeting.
Okay.
With, with Jim Jeremia. Give him what you have, and he could give you an educated, um, very educated path to go down, as opposed to hearing it from us.
And we've realized there could be some adjustments, you know?
Yes, but, but.
Couple thousand dollars here and there, but twenty, fifty.
He always says, come as soon as you can in the process, don't spend the money until you've done that, so he's more than willing to do that.
Right.
And he's very aware of.
Yes.
Everything you're telling us right now.
And we've come right out and asked Bob Rose, you know, and I wasn't gonna mention his name, cause I'm not about, my purpose for being here is to get support, not to throw somebody under the bus, but, at this point, we can't really get a straight answer from him, so we don't know how to take the next step.
Well, again, the meeting.
I would reschedule that meeting with, with our town manager and Jim Jeremia.
Yes.
Okay, okay, great, all right.
Well, let, yeah, let us know.
What was that, I'm sorry?
No, I just said one of them should be there also, just so they have an idea of what's going on, and see. I think Jim is an utmost stand-up guy to deal with.
Absolutely.
You know, so we can go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Oates Colonial Way, just two quickies. Uh, about a month and a half ago, uh, all committees and boards were tabled till we came up with a new application process. How's that coming along?
Um, we, we are working on it, and hopefully by next agenda, we'll have something.
Great, thank you. Number two, is it possible that we could consider a cellphone policy here at the meeting? So we have four councils, uh, five counselors paying attention to the meeting and not just four.
I would just respond to that, say that I rely on my phone for a number of different emails and different things that we have to rely on back and forth, it's not all on the laptop.
And I use mine for the agenda, yeah.
So don't assume that it's just, you know, someone playing on their phone.
Oh, I'm assuming that.
Well, don't.
Well, Tom.
Well, I do.
I could tell you now, some people message me from the audience or whatever, saying they can't hear.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I understand that.
If I don't look, well, if I don't look at that.
But when you're sitting playing on the phone, when you're taking a vote, and you have to be nudged, uh, you have to vote, because you're not paying attention to the meeting, that's.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Um, just a couple of quick things from me, I, uh, received a letter from Rhode Island DEM for, uh, priority list request for projects for fiscal year twenty twenty. Did you receive this, Ernie?
Yes.
All right, so you're gonna take care of that, you and Dave Capozzi. Um, also, uh, just for the next agenda for, um, we have, uh, school one, and the reason why I'm saying it now is, one of our West Wallack students, Caroline Sekio, uh, West Wallack, Caroline Story, uh, Providence Palace, is notable mention winner. Um, she'll be awarded at the Newport Art Museum at two P.M., April seventh, so I figured I'd tell you that now, so, um, it doesn't, if anybody wants to attend that, but I'll also have her, April seventh, two thousand nineteen, at the Newport Art Museum.
Do you have time on that?
Uh, two P.M.
You said that probably three times.
Yeah, and I'll have, I'll have Mary Ann email this to us, so you guys have it, but also put it on correspondence. Um, Ernie, you also have the first letter I gave you from, uh, Colleen Iafredi. I'll put that on correspondence, until we get solid numbers and solid information, and then we can invite them to a council meeting, probably end of April.
Do you have a?
Ask you a quick question. Derek Free, answers F. Um, the Recreation Committee, two meetings ago, the agenda had three positions. This one had one position. How many are there?
This, do you wanna take it on me?
There's a, there's some confusion there, there's one position.
And two alternates.
And two alternates. Now, the alternates we approved, then we changed, then we disapproved.
We didn't approve.
No, we, 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 we have talked about it in a meeting, and it never fully got approved, so that's why it's only one position.
So is there still one or two?
There's one position, there's one member in question, that I don't think he's going to be on the committee anymore. I'm still trying to find that out. So, once we get confirmation, the letter has to be.
I read this today, and it says one full member, I remember two meetings ago, the discussion came up with, it was three.
I was told, in order to remove a person, they have to send a letter stating they don't want, they can't or don't wanna be on.
Or they didn't attend three meetings, but we haven't had three meetings.
We haven't had three.
Well, if they don't have time anymore.
Did I?
That's, um.
I know they don't, but I have nothing invited to say that, so.
Did, um.
So, I, I'm guessing there's going to be two members. Right now, there's one.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.